And y'all can go ahead and change-
You know what page it's on?
Six.
Go ahead and change that salary figure for twenty to three eight five eight four three three.
Four three three?
Three eight five eight four three three.
Okay.
Jennifer, write this salary number in. Mark through that three point nine five two and put three eight five eight four three three.
Y'all ready?
Yep.
All right. Jill, chief?
I guess we'll just start with maybe salaries, your request in positions.
I've requested two additional positions and then two promotional positions. One being an administrative assistant position. We currently have two positions, administrative positions, in the police department. One which is the assistant to the chief and the other one currently is for investigations. And I would like to add a third one that can help with patrol needs because right now everything the patrol needs in addition to the extra duties that I've placed on the investigative position or the investigation administrative assistant with special events and community relations has kind of gotten them both overloaded. So I would like to add that third administrative position to kind of spread the love a little and help out with some of the additional roles that we need addressed in addition to being able to back up our records clerk.
What this number you gave us, Jill, the three eight five eight, is that reflective of adding another position?
Yes, the three point nine five two was a little bit high. The formula was picking up some recent vacancies and those people wouldn't get it for a year after being here. So I went and modified that formula and took out those and it helped by about ninety-four thousand dollars. So I just, I was double checking the salary figures to make sure that that was, and I noticed that the formula had that in there. So that's the three point eight.
Okay. With that position?
Yes, yes.
Calculations of six point three percent increase over the revised budget. Is it safe to assume that if you put the full salary in the budget, we're not going to, we're going to be under that? Let's just start our projected actual right now is going to come in under that, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's assuming you hired them and they all started October 1, right?
Yes.
And then the other numbers, your total expenditures, seven four nine eight seven ninety-six would also change by that. But then would any of the, and I know it's probably small potatoes compared, but you have the payroll taxes, retirement, all that kind of stuff. Is that, or those numbers need, do they, would they go down as well, especially your new three eight five eight number?
I'm gonna have to go back and recheck that one.
There's something to check.
Yeah.
Just something to check.
I'm gonna have to go back and recheck that one. I was zoned in on those salaries.
You know, the, I'm just kind of going through here, picking on numbers, the computer expense, you know, once again, it's kind of small relative to the budget, but I kind of look at things in percentages and that's jumped up by sixteen percent.
When are you doing your part?
After, after.
Right, you're gonna, he's gonna-
But you've actually put those computer expenses in each department, right? So it's not in IT. If it's an IT expense, like it's going in the department, well-
Oh, no, no.
Other than you're gonna have your own IT department.
Right, well, his department is an expense to every department.
Right.
So he's going over all of IT for each department.
But it's allocated everywhere else.
Absolutely.
So, you know, just kind of looking at trends though, that's gone up by about sixteen or seventeen percent, the computer expenses.
It's gonna be a one-time investment on something that, and let him communicate.
Yeah, yeah, that was my question.
On something that long-term is going to save us a lot of money and it's going to be far more efficient. But I'll let him give you the spiel because it's, I think it's an easy buy-in for y'all.
Jeff's gonna tell us?
Yeah, it's basically, it's a one-time expense for the hardware and there's a software component, but it's a ten-year, is it ten or more?
About seven.
Well, Sean said ten.
Then it's ten. I always go conservative.
It's still longer than what our computers are right now.
All right, well, I mean, if I'm looking at this, the three numbers jump out to me are the purchases of vehicles and equipment. You know, it's up by a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
What are you not buying?
Yeah, the capital improvements, the corrections.
Actually, this has been edited, cut twice.
A hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
The general supplies went down a hundred and ten thousand.
What was that line of duty consolidated in there?
That's generally, we broke out.
That was one, the general supplies actually-
We created the line of duty, a separate line of-
It used to be consolidated.
So you have to add those two together to compare it to last year's.
So one twenty-one, one twenty-two last year.
And this is with all departments. General supplies have been broken out and they're different things for different departments, but just to better manage their individual, there's a lot of broad things that can make up a big total, so we're trying to detail that more.
Your line of duties, your ammo. Your line of duties and your other general are added together to equal the, which was the one forty-five of previous year.
Right, exactly.
So one twenty-one.
Right.
Okay. So then, you know, so that's less. So back to the vehicles and equipment, maybe we need to look in munis and look at the details on that?
Yes.
And can refresh my memory too, these are outright buying?
They are.
Yeah. And really, fleet management as a whole is something that we're really trying to get a better handle on and making sure that with every purchase we make, there's something that it's going to be trading in. And we have upgraded a lot, a lot of our vehicles, but we're adding officers and that's, well, you can speak to that.
Yeah.
On this particular one, it's, we have to do a better job at really rolling these over better because we have Crown VIX that are from, tell us some of the oldest ones.
We currently have ten Crown VIX that range from two thousand five to two thousand nine, who are all, all of them are in excess of a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
But they're being used still.
And they're still being used. We have forty-seven vehicles in our fleet with the police department and currently forty-one are assigned officers. The ones that we have, the, two, three, four, five, out of the six that we have remaining, two of them are not even police-rated vehicles. So what we're trying to do is push out the old fleet and we have four vehicles that we want to, the Crown VIX that we want to push out.
Replace them with Tahos.
Replace them with Tahos.
I mean, I mean, just to ask you point-blank, is everything necessary in this year? That's, you know, two hundred and fourteen thousand. Look, we want everybody to have nice vehicles too, but, you know, I mean, and it may be that we're gonna get, you know, we're gonna have some Tahos that are probably actually gonna start being retired soon.
Yeah, we're, we're approaching the hundred thousand mile, but the, it's been suggested through mechanics with the work, the amount of work that is about to go into these Crown VIX, that we need to start replacing them. And because we have ten, my goal is over the next five years to get these pushed out. So if you've got ten, we've got to start pushing some of them out before we run into issues with the Tahos.
Well, here's, and I just, okay, so if you show me on all of that, and anybody jump in at any time, you know, but when I look at your expenses of seven point five million dollars versus six point seven last year, it's a twelve percent increase. Once again, these double-digit increases.
Look at actuals.
Well, yeah, but I have to, well, I can look at actuals, but if I look at that, my number's gonna be even worse.
Oh, I know, I know.
If I was looking at budget, I mean, it's a twelve percent over budget last year. If I look at the budget dollar figure, it's roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. If I look at actual, I mean, I have to look at it as if we're gonna spend everything in budget. It's a twenty, it's almost twenty-two percent increase.
It's actually probably more than that. I mean, I'm looking at it basically from two thousand seventeen because when we have the full-time, you know, people in that department, it has never been added to. So we really started adding in two thousand nineteen and during this fiscal year before it has been flat and in some years decreased. Is the full, I'm not sure if it's in this packet, the full-time employees in each department, I don't-
Well, the seventeen to eighteen is a, it went up, the actuals went up by roughly six hundred thousand. The next year that I have on this page, it went up by, you know, roughly two hundred thousand. And then this year, we have a jump. If you were to project the budget over the actual number, it would actually be a one point four million dollar increase.
And really this, that's why the police jurisdiction has to be addressed. It's been something I've been saying that we've got to do.
But I still go back to, Mayor, if you, if you were to pull it back, are we gonna lay off police officers?
Nope. I mean, that's the thing is what-
That's where everything keeps going up and I just, I don't see where the-
But you're not, you're not getting the return.
We're gonna lose the revenue, but not cut the-
The revenue we're getting is not even offsetting half of the work.
We're gonna lose the revenue, but-
But are you gonna save anything by, you know, what's the expense you're gonna save if you were to do that?
Yeah, what is the expense you're gonna save if you pull back to your-
The expense you're going to save, I mean, for one thing, you're not gonna have to continue to increase. I mean, the only increase we've had in the police department for full-time, net full-time employees really happened in two thousand nineteen. And a lot of the other expenses have gone into, you know, infrastructure upgrades at the police department, which still needs more, and that's defined also in here in capital projects. There, the need is, is great. And I had it as part of my presentation for the, I'm not sure if we went over that part when I, because we were cut off.
Even though it's offset for the revenues, three hundred thousand of that expenses, SROs.
And we reimburse for that. Some of this is being funded from, from your taxes outside the corporate limits, but again, it doesn't even offset twenty-five percent. So, and then you've got the other funding source is impact fees for additional equipment. Now, for some of these vehicles that are in the budget, they're replacing something, so we can't use it for that. But we're using also the funding from the court to pay, offset some of the operating for their use, in that that fund has never been used before. And it's not a lot, it's only gonna offset, but we are using that funding source and-
Of the jail fund?
What else are we using? Let's see, it's impact.
So one of those vehicles, we have impact fees to pay for one of those vehicles because that's an additional.
It's an additional officer.
Turn to page twenty-three, there's a breakdown of what police, the impact fee projects are scheduled to pay for.
And then the SS, the school resource officers are gonna be reimbursed and it'll be offset there too.
And then there's also the, and this is a fluctuating, I know we talked about it earlier yesterday or sometime recently, but employee medical insurance, you know, that's showing a hundred and sixty thousand increase from last year, but it was actually, last year was a hundred and ten thousand less than what was budgeted.
It's just one of those things we can't, right now, I don't know that we're gonna do it that way anymore anyway, right? We're gonna do it as a-
Always do it as the fifteen or whatever, the, or person.
So, so right now, it's based on if that police officer in that department and their family, all their claims are coded there, I'm gonna move that to somewhere else, but we're gonna charge the five hundred dollars for single and twelve nine eight for-
You can come up here if you want.
-family coverage, that will be moved monthly over to that fund to pay the claims. And then it'd be budgeted much better.
And we also have-
It's swings back and forth unless you have increase in employees.
Right. And Kim is putting together a wellness plan that the Baldwin County has, and we've kind of started with iHealthy, but, you know, we can ask people to sign up for this, but unless you incentivize it, you know, what we want to look at is making that the insurance that we're providing right now is the discounted rate. And so you have a year of accountability, basically, that will keep that rate in place. And it doesn't go, really doesn't go up that much if you don't, but it will, long-term, create an incentive to be healthier. And you go through, you can probably speak to this better if you wanna, but it's kind of what we talked about when we started iHealthy and then it was covered when Beau came and did his presentation with Cobb's Allen, is that, you know, building in a wellness program is an investment in the quality of work that is performed. People take less time off, but they also, a lot oftentimes, you know, enjoy their job better. But there's just all kinds of benefits to that and something that a lot of municipalities are doing because we have to make them accountable when you're spending tax dollars.
Do y'all want to talk about that now or do y'all just go back to this?
Yeah, I was just saying that on those insurances, when you see them, know that we do have a plan.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't-
Didn't have time to get that all in place this year, but I think coming from the county-
Well, it's gonna take a year anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever we do now, it wouldn't be effective until-
But it's included in your budget packet, but, you know, on the end, on your last meetings, if y'all want to talk about it, but I do want y'all to see that and approve it because, you know, once we get to that, because you gotta think about, it's gotta be approved now to give employees a year-
Right.
-to know if they don't do something this year, then next year is effective. And that's important for y'all to approve.
And that's why I want to say that this, these numbers, they just, they honestly, they scare me to death because even if we go under budget this year on this, on this police budget, it's twelve percent over last year's budget, it's twenty-three percent over last year's actuals. Even if it doesn't hit us a hundred percent until twenty twenty-one, it's a huge, huge number. I mean, does anybody else-
I can tell right now, it's gonna increase.
Am I the one concerned about a twenty-three percent increase?
If we don't address the police jurisdiction.
Well, if you look at the actual from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, projected actual, it's only a two hundred thousand. But go back, just go back to previous year though, it's a, it's a six hundred thousand.
But that's because-
The six hundred thousands and the seven hundred thousands.
Nothing with an increasing services and hiring employees in the police department happened before this term or even talked about.
When you have the cost of forty-one thousand per car, is that, that's just the car?
That's just the vehicle.
Right.
And then the equipment on top of that.
We did talk about-
Is that equipment in this vehicle purchase or is that in another lineup?
That's in this hole, we'll tire them out. It's broken down, if you go into the detail over in the description, if you go to the very right on the line and click on detail, it'll have a breakdown of the radars and car cans.
Mr. Vane, it's also on this big sheet, it details it out, if you still have this.
So, and then I see a forty thousand, where would you build this ammunition?
That, we have already looked and discovered a site, it's gonna be right there, it's actually gonna be right next to the jail. Currently where we have that, which is in our building, is not recommended.
Right.
And it needs to, that is a huge safety issue.
And that is one of the items impact the monies can pay for.
You say it's in a makeshift closet now?
Correct.
The closet, and the closet can't be made fireproof? Forty thousand dollars to put down, I'm just wondering if we could harden some room in there for the fire rating, you know, fire-rated materials?
The only, the only place that that would even be, would be our vault where we keep our evidence. And I'm not even sure that the building, the room that it's actually in right now should be where it is.
Counsel, comments on the police budget?
Let's go back to look at the, at the salaries, you know, with the twenty eighteen actual and then the twenty nineteen actual. Increase, what, sixty thousand dollars? How many, I guess, how many positions are
I've requested-
Not filled currently, at today.
Well, currently, four, four positions have not been filled for police officers. And then we also have one full-time correction, two part-time corrections, and then one part-time communications.
Right.
Yes.
So that's why the, that's why there's the jump from-
Correct.
The three two to the three seven seven, not counting the new positions.
Right, right, well-
If you were to fund all those, I mean, if you were to fill all those positions and be paying the salaries, you'd be at that three seven seven number that's inside the detail in munis.
And then I got sidetracked when y'all were talking about salaries for this year, or positions for this year.
Click on the detail for salaries.
I heard the administrative assistant for patrol.
Correct, administrative position. We've also requested one more police officer because the commission has agreed to give us a sixth SRO.
Right.
And then there were two promotions, one for correction supervisor. The lieutenant over the jail now has taken on additional, he's now, he's now responsible for communication and records. So we need someone to be over the jail to help with those responsibilities. And then the other promotion was a corporal. Previous administration had taken out the rank structure in investigations, and I would like to reestablish that corporal's position back in the investigative division.
So from last year's to this year, we're not adding any police officer other than the SRO?
That's correct.
And we currently have four that are unfilled.
Correct.
We're gonna be filling those.
Yes.
And I think that's what affected the actuals also.
You give the SRO a rebirth.
And that's not factored into the shortfall, correct?
Yeah, it should be.
Well, it's on the top in the grants, police, the three hundred thousand, that's what that is.
Yep. Any more comments? I'm just afraid to rely on the fact that we're gonna have, we're gonna be understaffed just because of, you know, delaying the time and using that number. Or either, if we think the salary is probably good to budget based on, you know, full-time, you know, entire year employment, that's a good number. We know it's gonna come in under that, you know, just by definition, but it does come back to get you, you know, the next year potentially. And I just, I'm very concerned with the numbers. I think that, and if I look at this, if this step back and look at all the numbers, which, as I was looking at earlier today, just in general government alone, there was over six hundred thousand dollars in new salaries and that did not include benefits. That was just the salary portion, six hundred thousand in utilities, which more take care of themselves, but there was over five hundred thousand dollars in new salaries and not including benefits for the utilities. And, I mean, it's, I keep thinking that, you know, we used to have a little bit of extra money left over and then I hear that, you know, we all need, 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 and, but I thought we had caught up with a lot of these positions. I didn't think that, you know, it's like every year, well, next year we won't have to do this because we're caught up, but then we get to next year and in that year I hear, yeah, we need this, we need this, and this, and this, because we're not caught up.
That's why I gave y'all the whole thing of, for the full-time employees, year to year. And that was part of the whole printout for the presentation I did. I didn't finish the presentation, but to give you an idea on police, in two thousand twelve, we had forty-four full-time and then forty-eight in two thousand thirteen, then we went back down to forty-six in fourteen, and that kept in fifteen, and then it went down to forty-five in two thousand sixteen. So for that-
And where are we, what was this?
That was, well, that was last term.
What would the twenty twenty be? I mean, this is helpful.
Well, actually, the twenty twenty's not in here, but we're only adding one-
We'd only be adding the one-
SRO.
SRO position.
The four that are not filled should be five.
Right, so we would be up to-
But I was gonna say-
What would we be, because I don't have the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen numbers. So what would we be?
Right, so seventeen, we went up to forty-nine, and two thousand eighteen, fifty-nine, and in two thousand nineteen, sixty-one. So we have gained in this term from, hold on, oh, that just goes to eighteen. We gained net six from two thousand sixteen to eighteen and then net ten from eighteen to nineteen. So most of them came in this last year and-
We're looking at nineteen to sixteen, for instance. Your sixteen number was forty-five and so that's a net of sixteen, sixteen from nineteen to sixteen, and then you're adding how many more this year?
Nineteen to sixteen.
Yep. From our two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, has added sixteen.
Right.
And I kind of thought, at some point, we're caught up, but it just-
Right, and I think you are if we start planning the police jurisdiction. If you're gonna keep it three miles, half of the population lives outside the city and it's growing. We don't even know an accurate population right now, but it's, I mean, and I've given y'all statistics before on Foley and Daphne and, you know, other ones. I mean, this is, I think that with the second phase of the Auburn study, that will define much better what that should look like. But I think the majority of the increase happened in two thousand nineteen.
Well, we can, we, I don't want to go back and forth on the police jurisdiction during the budget meeting, I mean, we can-
But it's definitely part of the budget planning.
But I still don't see where the cost savings is because I haven't been told yet where we're gonna reduce costs if you do that, and I guess-
Well, it's not that you reduce costs, but you reduce the increase every year because you're gonna have to increase this, three miles is a very large jurisdiction.
You're gonna start off year, year one with a, with a very, very large reduction.
You're not gonna have, you probably wouldn't have the overtime and you, you know, that, we're doing it right now as if nothing's gonna happen because nobody wanted to address the planning jurisdiction. We're three years in and I think we should have already been into a transition of something. I mean, it's, it is a department that is not financially sustainable, period. And as long as we continue this path, this is the type of difference you're gonna look at. The revenue, not that they have much revenue, is flat and, but the expenses are going to be increasing.
So personnel in the police department from sixteen to nineteen, that's not counting this year, I didn't add it, is a thirty-six percent increase?
It's, from sixteen to nineteen, right, it's- It's, from sixteen to nineteen, right, it's a.
Sixteen divided by forty-five, thirty-six percent. Way I calculated, if you know.
Yeah, but you got forty-four percent growth too, and I think that's understated.
I will say that marked in the salaries figures are, you know, a three percent, um, whatever you wanna call it, merit, or, and, uh, a one and a half for regular full-time part, I mean, regular part-time employees, not anybody flat, but there is a one and a half worked in for regular part-time, so we have some, you know, y'all, y'all can choose what you wanna do on that as well, but just so you know, that's worked into these figures.
So basically four and a half percent total.
Well, no, it's one, one and a half for part-time, three for full-time.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that would make a difference.
All right, and to say, I'm moving on, counsel, any other, um, comments on that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chew on this for a while, I'm, I'm, I mean, and I don't, I don't hear anybody make any changes, but I'm gonna reserve the right to suggest an announcement in the overall. Any other comments on that?
Well, and, you know, I, I know that it doesn't make much of a difference, but when you're looking at salaries, you also wanna look at those overtime amounts, and in nineteen, we budgeted a hundred and seventy-six thousand, and for this year, we're only budgeting a hundred and thirty thousand, so, um, you know, we've reduced the overtime amount also, so it, it's just, you have to look at it as a whole, but even still, I know that doesn't help much.
Yeah, and not trying to just pick on employees on that, I mean, 'cause, you know, some of that's palatable, I, I mean, I mean, literally, I'm literally looking at the whole number, I'm looking at the bottom line of every, when I look at everything in there, and I, and I literally see it going up by, granted, it won't go up that much because the people won't be there all year, but still, on paper, it's, you know, one point, uh, you know, one point three, one point four million dollars in one year, and it's a, it's a huge step up.
Because we were severely.
I mean, the reason picking this is a big, you got big numbers, I think, it's just a big number department.
Now, are we just. Severely understaffed before, that's why.
But we're talking about just salaries, correct?
I'm talking bottom line.
Are you talking bottom line?
I'm talking expenditure.
Because we also.
I'm looking at the seven point five million dollars.
We also have some other things that we are having to get done that have not been done over the last few years, we're having to replace some jail doors that are a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the corrections capital improvements there?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
We've got that in there as well, that we've talked about using the.
I thought we talked about that.
That has actually been in, and, and you have, that has been in the budget for the last two to three years, and it was budgeted at fifty thousand dollars. The, the condition of those doors are beyond, uh, patching, they have to be replaced.
I mean, the fifty thousand was a patch, that was for patching?
Yes, that was for patching.
Is this one hundred thousand Stephanie, is that for just one door?
No, that is, that will, I'm hoping that that is going to complete, uh, because we are going to actually reuse all of the hardware, all the, we're gonna reuse the locks, the hardware, the glass and the windows to put into new doors in, in the jail, and it's not in the jail, it's the outside doors that have rusted from the bottom up, so, um, and, and it's beyond, it's beyond being able to patch at this point. I wanted to quickly go over, and this is some old, from a, from an old presentation I gave y'all, but, um, the, the population in the police jurisdiction is almost thirty-three thousand, I mean, these are just estimates, I think it's probably more, but Prattville has eighty-three sworn officers, and, and the total that we're talking about for full-time, these are not sworn officers, these are all full-time employees. These are, they have eighty-three sworn officers, and Vestavia Hill, so their population is thirty-four, they have eighty-two sworn officers, this doesn't include the other full-time people. In Alabaster with thirty-one thousand, they have sixty-one sworn officers. Bessemer, I don't know why they have so many, but they have a population of almost twenty-seven thousand, this is from two thousand sixteen, sworn officers a hundred and eighteen.
Because their crime rates are higher than.
Right. Well, um, like I said, Daphne, which should be pretty similar to us, has in two thousand sixteen, a little over twenty-four thousand, and they have fifty sworn officers. Our sworn officers, you know, just until recently.
Let's go back and use Daphne, Daphne has fifty.
As of two thousand sixteen, I don't know what it is in two thousand nineteen.
But the population, what we're using number.
Oh, right, twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, and our population now is, for all intents and purposes, twenty thousand, say, is a good number.
No, we, our police jurisdiction is thirty, is almost thirty-three thousand.
Not really, man, I believe thirty-five, even.
Yeah, so that's why we have to look at it, they don't have a police jurisdiction, Daphne.
Thirty-five thousand, and we have sixty-one officers, or how many sworn officers?
No, we have forty-one currently.
Forty-one sworn officers.
And then when we, when we, we're able to hire the other four, so we'll be up to forty-six.
That all of the positions filled are unfilled, forty-six positions?
Yeah, th- this is sworn officers.
This would be sworn officers.
Right.
Now, all of these other places have more full-time people than sworn officers than we do too, but I'm just talking about sworn officers, 'cause that's what we're dealing with right now.
And on the front page also, there's, um, we've got, we've got a hundred and fifty-four thousand, um, stated there for the funding for corrections capital purchases. Um, our cash account right now is like two hundred and eighteen thousand, but that one fifty-four can help pay for these corrections capital improvements as well.
And when I gave you these figures in two thousand sixteen, um, I didn't give it to, to two thousand sixteen, the data was from two thousand sixteen, but I proposed it in, I think, two thousand seventeen. We had all of these, um, I'm gonna send y'all this graph, but Fairhope at the time had thirty-six sworn officers.
And, and Mayor, I didn't really, I don't really subscribe to the FBI statistics.
These are not FBI statistics.
No, no, but I'm trying to compliment you here, but, but the, the Daphne comparison resonates, you know.
Right, well, Foley is the most, and it's not in here, Foley is the one that, and I get it, they have a lot more transient population.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that Foley is as much of a comparison, it is somewhat, Baldwin County, but not nearly the comparison that Daphne is.
I'm sending this.
Police Department does have a tendency, and I'm, I'm sure it's got to do with the, the hiring process and when you actually onboard somebody, but they've been coming in under budget by a pretty decent amount each time, so.
Yeah, I know, and, and I, I see that, and I recognize that, I'm just worried about the, the after effect, and it just, the carryover effect.
Right.
But it's, I'm, I'm saying that.
They make good arguments for all of it, that's, that's the thing, it's just that big number.
The three miles, we, we should seriously consider going to one and a half, I mean, at the very least, as a transition, because it, I, I think that we'll, we'll know more, I think, with the more data, the, um, police department is gathering a lot more data than we had before, and the data is in comparison for out, out of the city limits and inside the city limits, things that are, that were not done for. So, but they're doing it, and now we have things to compare it to, you know, I, I think we're not adding a lot, this, um, budget cycle, but we're going to have to continue, no question about it, doing that, going from three to one and a half.
I wanna cut, I wanna cut, but my arguments are pretty weak.
I mean, it's, like I said, it's just financially, and I do have, um, the.
Which one?
I have a spreadsheet of what the income would be for one point five miles also, I'll put on here.
Counsel, any other comments?
I'm gonna jump in and just ask a question. From last year's actuals of three million two hundred fifty-five, we were talking about salaries. The only thing that's added for this year are four employees, I mean, four employees or two employees?
Well, it will be.
And two raises, is that correct?
Yes, those are the new positions that I requested.
Plus, uh, say, a three percent increase overall. Well, that's somewhere around a two hundred nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, but the increase is six hundred thousand in salaries, where's the other three hundred ninety thousand dollars?
All those positions that haven't been filled, yes.
No, I just asked that.
No, well, no, from the night.
Forty-seven positions include things that are filled and unfilled, I just asked that, and you said yes, is that not right?
Right, no, the new, the new positions, now, that doesn't include the, because we haven't, the unfilled positions.
Unfilled.
For anything other than, for, other than the officer, I mean, uh, the sworn officers.
No, it includes some sworn officers too.
Anything other than the two new ones that she's asking for for twenty-twenty?
It's eight unfilled plus two new, right?
That's what I need to.
Right, and that's why we're under, but right, right.
Okay. At least that answered my question. Trying to figure out where three hundred ninety thousand dollar went, in salaries alone.
But really, there, there is no way to get additional income in the police jurisdiction. And that, that's been flat for at lea- at least three years, that income, while the expenses for the whole department have been increasing a lot, um, so that's when.
Well, unless you get retail, if you get new retail, you get, you get half the sales tax.
No, the, the, what, in the police jurisdiction, the, the only income that can go towards the police department is.
Sales tax, and it goes to the general fund?
Well, this is what's designated for it, it's, um, let's see, outside. Police jurisdiction, right, license fees, cigarette, tobacco, liquor, lodging, sales tax, a half percent sales tax, so all of those.
Well, allocate that much, you know, back to that.
Oh, that does go to the police, yeah.
Officers are working in, you know, it, it, yeah, I think it can be justified, they're spending it there.
In two thousand, let's see, does this go? Okay, I, I have the updated two thousand nineteen, you put together for me, but, um, when you, when you're looking, this budget passed, and we, it actually came out in two thousand twenty for this amount, you have to understand that only one point three million of that is coming from outside the city limit, so that's, that's the part that we have to, that's not gonna go away.
That's the total amount of revenue that we're giving.
It's generated from outside the city limits, so it's.
How much was that?
So if you've, I'm saying.
Say one point three.
Yeah, well, one point three is about what it's been for the last three years, and in the beginning, it was kind of offsetting maybe a quarter, but every year, it's, the share is diminishing, because that, that income is not increasing, but because of this enormous police jurisdiction, the expenses have been.
And scaling it back to one and a half miles would drop it from one point three to?
To, well, in two thousand seventeen, um, it looked like, I'm, just let me pull the, the updated one, but it looked like in two thousand seventeen, it would've been seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. But we're, we're three years into not planning though, so I mean, some of these, we might not have had to increase, but let me pull up the updated.
But that'd cut that in, in half, right?
Right, well.
One point three.
It's, it's a little bit more than half.
Or is that not?
One of your largest taxpayers would still remain in that one point five area.
Walmart.
Or no, the hotel.
Walmart, Walmart's in the city.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Let me just, 'cause I have it updated, pull it up.
And I did verify that with our map, that it was a, been a little way back.
Okay. And it's not coming out.
All right. Yeah, let's, uh, let's, I'm trying to move this along a little bit, what else, uh, do y'all have questions about in the police department?
I don't think there's anybody. I think Jeff wanted to start off talking about the computer part for police, and then, and then go into the rest of the computer stuff.
Okay. So we're going to do IT, and we do the, the computers for the police department.
Okay, just to give you an idea, the seventeen, um, for, if we pulled back one point five miles, would have been, well, in two thousand eighteen, it would've been seven, no, that's, that's right, I'm so sorry. I have so many spreadsheets. Okay. Is this it? I'm just wondering, this might be it, yeah, okay, so it would've been. I gotta find the graph that I actually saved.
You wanna go ahead?
Y'all can go ahead, and I'll give you those figures.
On the police computer.
Okay, well.
And that's, that's in, in the grand scheme of things, that's not huge, so we'll spend all.
Okay. Yeah, not, um, I'll just kinda. Okay, so, um, just, I guess we'll go over the, the high ones, uh, the CAT RMS, uh, software support, that's a yearly annual, uh, fee that we pay for that software. Something that's different, um, in this, uh, this year that wasn't out there last year is the Munis support, that was coded somewhere else besides the computer budget, and so there may be an increase slightly in the, in the computer budget.
Somewhere else, maybe in the, in the police budget, or somewhere else, just in the general government budget?
I forgot where it was charged to.
Somewhere else, probably in the, um, and by, yeah, by department.
Right.
Okay.
Um, everything else is, uh, the, the other thing that went up, and will continue to go up, is the, um, uh, the off-site, uh, storage for backups. Just as we add more and more backups to the system, the price increases to, to store it. Uh, what we're gonna try to do, Sean and I are gonna try to work on different compression methods and de-duplication methods to try to, um, limit the amount of data that we're storing off-site, and probably look at our strategies, how much data we need to, to store, to try to reduce that number. The Microsoft licenses for Mark, the email and Office went up slightly, I'm adding a new module this year, it's called, uh, Advanced Threat Protection, that, um, helps, um, filter out phishing emails, um, and overall is better spam protection, um, which I don't agree with, I think they should include it by default, but they wanna charge, just, I think, uh, I think it's like an additional eight dollars per user to add that, and just, just for the sheer volume of phishing emails that we get, I think it'll be beneficial.
What do we do, good time to ask this question, what do we do to train our employees to, you know, how to, how to spot a phishing email?
Interesting you say that.
Extremely sophisticated, I can give you some examples in our own company, they literally, people are sending emails that look like they're coming from the CEO to an accountant and saying, we're, we're twenty thousand short in this account, so transfer the money from here to here.
Oh, well, we don't get that.
It is so well.
Yeah, no, we had, uh, it's a lateral email phishing.
It could look like it's coming from the chief to a lieutenant, and they're so sophisticated, if they're not paying attention, it's gonna take them somewhere they don't wanna go.
That's a good question, and what we've done this year is we've added, uh, cybersecurity training for every employee, so we, I split them up.
It's extensive.
He cut us off when we didn't use it, if we didn't do the test, he, he would.
Except for me, and I'm almost done.
Well, that's because you started, there's, I cut off some users that didn't start.
I am almost there.
And we only got one user right now that hadn't completed, and I gotta deal with him, uh, by the end of the week, he'll, he'll complete it.
They're totally, you know, to hover their mouse on the, you know, on the, the from, and look at it and make sure that that email, you know, doesn't have an extra character or letter added to Chief Ollinhead's email.
He's also sending his own, own phishing to see who might, just so we can.
We are, good?
Yeah, I mean, we're do, we're taking this very seriously.
We, uh, we went from a, I think we had about a fifteen percent failure weight rate, after the education, we went down to three percent, I mean, it helped.
Well, that's really.
Yeah, the other thing, I don't remember where I was, but the indication was sixty-seven percent of all viruses come in through phishing.
Oh, it's.
Through email.
They can hack our system, and we would be.
I would think it'd be more, but yeah.
And it may have been more.
Yeah.
I wanna say eighty-seven percent, but I, I mean, it's kinda like we can call BS on it, but it was extremely high number, strictly due to email.
Yeah, so.
So three percent's a good, that's good.
It is good, yeah.
Good trend, I mean, it could be one percent, but hey, that's good.
But only, my fear is it only takes one slip up from one employee to ruin the whole thing, so.
Point oh one percent.
And, and new, new hires have to go do this too, so, um, but the main thing is, it's not just that we're getting trained better, but the, the software, that's part of this expense, I mean, there have been quite a few municipalities and utilities that have been. I mean, there have been quite a few municipalities and utilities that have been, you know, hacked into and, I mean.
Those usually.
It can be absolutely financially devastating.
Yeah, those usually originate from email. So I think more protection we add, just right now, it would be better. Let me see what else that sticks out. Everything else is pretty much the same from last year. Oh, one thing we did add this year too is every department splitting up, social media archiving. It's, I don't know if it's required or highly recommended that all of our social media accounts have an archive, a backup copy of every post that's added, every comment that's added is archived. There's been a lot of litigation from other cities that, that kind of came from social media. And I believe it was like people deleting posts and that they shouldn't have, or some kind of manipulation of the social media accounts or posts after they're put out there. So what we're gonna do is, there's a company that will come through and put up a monitor on each account and constantly back it up. And so if we ever need to fulfill a public record request, we'd be able to. That was a request from Lisa Hanks that we get this. So I believe it's required almost, because we have to be backing up our website, all those changes as well. So we're just adding our social media accounts now.
Well, you back up. It's not too, I don't think it's that terribly bad. I was looking for a bigger number than that.
Well, let's, keep in mind, it's split up between probably six different departments.
Yeah, I mean, I'm even thinking for the police portion, no, it's not too shocking to me.
Jeff, that Horizon Thin client is sitting over there in capital purchases because of the amount.
Right, we'll go over that once, once we finish with the police, because that really encompasses the entire city. So I know Stephanie's got, I think you've got to get, said you had to get to a meeting, so let me quickly look at that. We've got to.
This is the Thin client computer?
Right.
Well, if you go over to purchases, vehicles and equipment, that account, you'll see a Horizon Thin client for 45,000. That's what he's gonna speak to right now.
Well, no, I'll speak to it after Stephanie, we get done with the police, because that's kind of a longer conversation. But real quick, in the 50470, there's a CAT RMS update. We are committed for two years. We split the upgrade up for two years, we paid the first half last year, we've got to pay the second half this year. And that was for the officers to have mobile CAD in their vehicles. And the upgrades, I believe there was some GPS tracking and stuff added. So that's just the second half of that payment that we've got to make. It was approved last year. Also, I've got in here.
That's so it's uploading their data while they're driving around?
They, so when calls come into the city, the dispatcher immediately puts them into CAD and the officers in their vehicles can now see those calls as they're happening. And a sergeant can probably.
I think, can sergeant assign them?
Yes, they can do, they can do a lot more from their vehicle.
Yeah.
One-on-one.
I can't, I can't, I look at that and I see CAD, and the first thing I think, always wanting the police need CAD software.
Computer aided dispatch, not design.
Drawing up the plan.
Right, yeah.
How to attack, or draw it up.
The other thing, it's a must-have, we've got to upgrade our firewall. We've had it for about five years and they just released a new version of software that's not compatible with our older hardware. Yeah, well, I mean, as software, as new software is developed, it always requires better hardware. And so we are getting phased out of our, our hardware that we have is at end of life and we're gonna have to replace it. ESRI server, that was requested, have we done the planning department budget yet?
Yes, we already did that.
We haven't done building, but yeah.
That should have been talked about during planning department, because Hunter, Hunter Gwynn requested in this to be placed in, it's a $100,000 project, to add a ESRI server. Our GIS department currently does not have an ESRI server, we use single licenses. So we've got map files all over the place, there's not a centralized location to store map files. So right now, if a department head wants to pull up all the water lines in the city, we have to go to the GIS department and they print us out a map. But what this ESRI server will allow us to do is pull up ArcMap Viewer on our cell phone devices or laptops and pull up layers for ourselves. If you have more questions about that, I don't, I don't have much information, that's more of a planning thing. We could probably get them in to talk more about that.
That makes me think, do we ever tell our employees, it's just whatever bell and whistle they want, we give it to them?
Well, a GIS.
Nice if you have an unlimited amount of money.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, a true GIS department needs a GIS system. I mean, this is, we've, we're gathering information from the county, what the county can give us and we're saving it on just kind of individual desktops, there's no central repository for maps.
I'd say data is one of the things we're lacking the most in our city, and it's just such valuable information, but especially in planning.
Right, and I think what Richard's hope for the CAD system in the future is do modeling on rainstorm water and that type of thing, how you can do all kinds of different modeling, but again, not my specialty. We could probably set up another meeting, just another, maybe like a 15-minute conversation with that GIS department on that software. The second to last line, I got Microsoft Open Plan to Government. We are using Microsoft consumer licenses, and that's all that was available when we started using Microsoft. Now, they've, they're offering a government plan, which is compliant with DoD security compliance. All of the servers are located here in the United States, it got a little bit more stringent security on the government plan. Plus, our licenses will be a little cheaper as well. But in order to migrate to, from consumer to government, we'll need some third-party assistance. And the total, that total project will be $50,000 to get, it'll be bid out, but I've been, have an estimate that it's around $50,000 for us to migrate from one to the other. And it's a one-time cost, and we'll be able to recoup that cost over time because of the licensing will be cheaper.
Well, I see the 12,000, where's the 50,000 expense?
It's split out between utilities and general.
So it's all, it's not just police?
Right, so everybody kind of pays a share.
Tile.
Right.
Okay.
Also, the, I need one brand-new core switch for the dispatch server room. We just got to replace an old piece of equipment that's there, but it's the centralized switch that controls all telephone communication and communication for the whole, for the entire police department. We've had already one issue, I think it was earlier this year, where during a storm, it just shut off due to electrics, I don't know, surge. And it took me probably about 30 minutes to get it back running again. During that time, dispatch had no telephones, and can't risk that. We need to, we need to get a more robust switch in there in place, it has dual power supplies and more hardened hardware. It's a little pricey, but it's, it'll, it's built to last seven to 10 years.
And this is a one-time expense? I can't remember, not looking at.
I'm sorry, which one?
Is it a one-time expense?
Yes, one-time expense.
Actually, isn't it?
Right, well.
Rip and replace is what we've got. What was it?
Recabling.
Oh, the recabling of the PD, that desperately needs to be done. We've, somehow it missed last year's budget. There's just old cable in that building. If you walk into that dispatch network closet, it's a nightmare. You can't tell what's going to what. You try to add something new and you'll end up knocking two or three other devices offline in the process. It's old cabling, so what we want to do is have someone come in, recable the entire police department with CAT 6 cabling, just to future-proof it, and get all of the staff's wiring separated from dispatch. Staff wiring will go on the south side of the building, where dispatch is, cabling will stay on the north side, be a good separation.
Where is that on here? Where is that under?
Uh.
I don't see it in.
Capital purchases.
Oh, it's under.
No, that's capital improvements.
Capital improvements, okay, so it was not under that same item number?
75.
It's the next one after that.
I got you, that's 50475?
Yes.
That's correct.
So part of, part of that project.
Recable.
Yeah, right.
Hey, I want new tile and everything on the ceiling, you're killing me.
I don't need tile, you can cut that out. It's all right.
Is that something, the recabling is something you contract out? You don't have to.
Oh, yeah, definitely, it's too much for us to handle. Yeah, we can do one or two runs, but I mean, these are, this is over 175 runs, I believe.
You're gonna talk about the big investment?
Are we done, I guess we're done with police? Okay, I'll get, because I need to go.
Any other?
Sean appeared to talk about.
Oh, got you, got you, got you.
Any edits to this right now?
I'm gonna get y'all some more data that I'm working on right now. To look at.
The mighty good Christmas list right there.
Well, I mean, seriously, if y'all want to walk with me after the meeting, we'll look at that closet and they'll all be shocked.
Nobody even questions what's needed, or if it's not, but I mean, I just get concerned with, you know, getting everything done, you know, all in one year. Because it doesn't ever go down. I mean, if I was to see a trend where, yeah, we spent all this money last year to get us up to speed and we're gonna be able to have a lot of smaller budget next year, but it just doesn't happen. It's growing, and the rate of growth is what scares me, because, you know, our revenues are increasing 3%, 4%, 5%, and, you know, and a lot of these expenses are going up 10%, 11%, 12%, 20%, 30%.
We've met budget and exceeded it this year though, I mean, we're staying within our budget. We haven't gone through a year where we've been so way off that it's been.
We are, but are we providing everything to the citizens that we need to be providing?
Well, I could tell you, we're providing a lot more than we used to. I mean, we, last term, there was a deficit, and from 2008 to 2000, well, no. Yeah, 2008 to 2000, towards the end of 2016, we lost full-time employees. In the city as a net and in a utility as a net. We had to make up for that loss, the four years of not keeping up with growth, which we did. And now, we're adding for the growth we've had, the additional growth we've had this term. I mean, it's hard to catch up on that in three years because it's a big expense, but hopefully, we won't ignore that in the past, like we have in the past, because then it does become expensive and we can't plan ahead. So, but we've luckily been able to do it and absolutely budget, I mean, each year. And like I said, the deficit that shows for 2019 of 707,000 is as a result of a million-dollar transfer. So we exceeded goals last year in 2019.
All right. It's 515, what do y'all, y'all suggesting, anything?
I'm just moving on to the next department right now, I'm just.
Okay.
Doing all those changes right now.
All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
What's the IT? What's your number?
So what I want to have is Sean Sprout and our system administrator come up and explain that our biggest project that we have budgeted, it's spread out between all departments. The total cost of the project was around $230,000. But I'll let Sean explain what we're going to achieve with that.
Spread out among all departments in government or government and utilities.
Does everybody, everybody benefits from it?
Somewhere, it's gonna be $25,000 here and there, 30,000, 40,000.
I think it's better to understand just the future of computers.
Right, absolutely. So what it is, I mean, that, what, 230, you said, is actually not, it's a hardware, it's broken up into two things. You have hardware, software, and licensing. So the hardware is actually spec'd for 200 users. And the software and the licensing is spec'd for 50 users, so your initial, you know, go. Because we can't build the hardware out, you can eventually, but you have to start somewhere. So the, where they scaled it was to 200 users, so we would be fine for seven, eight years minimum. So we would just add more users to the system over time. But what it does is, you have a simple computer, like a thin client, I don't know if you guys are familiar with those. They don't have a, they have a special-built processor, they don't have any memory, all you do is hook up a monitor to them. So you can unplug it, move it anywhere, plug it back in, and right back where you're working.
And what's the cost of that?
The, the unit itself is only $300.
This is what we would be paying for in the future, after this investment, for computers. And we replace a ton each year with each self, with their software upgrades. There's computers that just, we can't use anymore, and.
Right, so every five years, we replace desktop computers. And some, and we're battling two things with desktop computers. We have to keep up with Windows to make sure we're on the current version, so right now, we're doing a transition from Windows 7 to Windows 10, in which we have to be completed by January of next year, because the support for Windows 7 ends. What this allows us to do is basically, we won't be purchasing full-fledged computers anymore, we'll be purchasing these thin clients. And so it's a rapid deployment too, because the images are already pre-built, so as soon as you plug it in, the user's ready to go.
What is it gonna look like, a notebook computer?
Whatever you put it on, like, I got it up on my phone now, I just logged in.
Yeah.
Now I have a Windows 10 desktop on my.
Are you remotely logging into a server?
Right.
Exactly, that's what it is, and like he was talking about, you create templates. Way I vision it, and it may change, you have a template built for like planning department, for electric department. When somebody gets in, or needs to go new computer, or we transition them, or we get a new employee, you just literally go to the desk, put that computer on there, plug it into the network, hook up the monitors, and they log in.
And there's.
There's no configuring the software or nothing, because that would be done on the backend by me or somebody else, and we would have that image, you just push it out, you give them permission to be able to log into the system, and it's done.
Opposed to a four, four-and-a-half hour setup, where we have to go to the, we have to get the desktop provisioned, install all the software one by one, have the user log in, move files over, it takes.
And the purchase of the computer.
And it's safer too, I mean, we have computers that crash, unfortunately, not everybody puts their files where they're supposed to, on backed up on the server, so they lose files, doesn't matter. Like I said, you can unplug it and they're not gonna lose anything, it is centrally located.
You're just going to a terminal, it's just wireless, and it may be like a phone or it may be like a laptop.
Exactly.
Terminal, that you're using to log into the mainframe.
Yep.
To access the data.
It's come a long ways since the ones, you know, disentering terminals, but like now, you wouldn't even need these laptops, you could have brought that up on your iPads.
Right.
So you make the initial investment of 230,000, and then you start saving for, how much do the devices cost compared to a computer?
They're 300, and depends on the computer we get, it varies between departments.
Yeah, I mean, a planning department computer can go to about $1,500. A police laptop is around $1,100, a basic user computer, about $800.
And that hardware does include like dedicated graphics cards built on the server, and that is in licensed.
Are they truly gonna be like in the planning department, or one of these more expensive computers? I mean, for the basic user, I see that, yeah, $500 savings, $400, $500 savings. For the $1,600 computer that we have to purchase, how many more computers are we still gonna have to purchase? Is there gonna be somebody that says, "No, I can't use that," I still have a computer?
That's the great thing about scalability on the, having that to the server, oh, you need more processing power, sure, have it done in two minutes. Need more RAM, sure, done.
You're only going to the server and.
Right, I do it, I won't have to leave my, I won't have to leave my desk, oh, you need more GPUs? Right, I do it, I won't have to leave my, I won't have to leave my desk, oh, you need more GPUs, because you need to go run something more intensive, because you guys need a map or something more, but you just do it there.
Is the two hundred and thirty thousand gonna give you enough capacity to begin with or?
That, that is scaled for two hundred people, two hundred users.
Two hundred users.
Which would be, obviously, not, that's, and that two thirty includes only fifty users.
And all of this is gonna be able to be backed up by the plan that you're gonna have, the, um.
Exactly, that's the good thing, it's local, I mean, it's stored in one, or stored in three locations or four, if we can find a fourth, because it shares, it's four servers technically, and they sharing information between each other. So if, you know, City Hall goes down, gets wiped out, that's okay, we got it three other locations, plus it's being backed up at another location, then probably we're gonna offload it into AWS.
These drives are mirroring each other?
Yeah. It's neat, it's a, it's a neat system.
I mean, you say you plug in.
Yep, power, all it requires is a power.
What are you gonna ask?
The power and a network guard, keyboard, mouse.
You may not know this, but I am, I am, you know, I can do brain surgery probably better, I can work with computers.
Sure.
And I can't do that.
But you wouldn't be the one plugging it in anyway.
I'm not, but somebody else.
Yeah, we would plug it in, but like if you had your iPad.
I'm not concerned about the safety with all, somebody else doing it.
That's a good question.
It's not supposed to be do it, because it's so easy.
Well, it's the same as somebody walked by and grabbed the whole computer off their desk, they would have a better opportunity.
Part of this system.
Oh, yeah, 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 just like any other computer, but like, you know, if they stole a regular computer, they'll have all that information that's stored locally, but they stole this computer, they're gonna have anything. They can log in, but they're not gonna be on our network, so they're not gonna be able to get it anyway.
Taping their password on the back of their.
Right, Jeff is like, good at that.
We do.
You have a fifteen character password, so you just write it on the back of your computer so you never forget it.
So if, if they were to, to steal one of these devices and take off site, they wouldn't be able to access anything.
Again, the general basis of the question is, is this as safe as the regular system we have?
It's safer.
This is, this is the future.
That will answer that. I'll be going in detail showing my.
So fifteen years ago.
Or through a VPN.
Or through a VPN.
Well, can we do a two-factor authentication?
Yes, definitely, we're moving towards that. Definitely.
In the presentation.
So you do VPN, you have a token or something that changes.
We already have that.
Yeah.
I have it on my laptop.
Are we going to that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, we were, we're playing with, um, two different vendors right, or testing out two different vendors right now and I'm trying to get.
That's gotta, yeah, absolutely.
But you had something to add?
At a company I was at fourteen years ago, we had thin clients and when we went there, the biggest thing employees have problems with, they can't load anything, they can't have their own pictures on there because it doesn't have a personal hard drive, so they can't be saving stuff to the personal hard drive. And that was probably the biggest feedback you get from employees is they want this nice little pretty picture or something and it.
So everybody's email, everybody's emails been server.
So, I mean.
Not having to be backed up from there, it makes it backups much easier, doesn't it?
We have that now, too, but you can save, I guess, some of your documents.
So this thin client has been out for a long time, probably much better than when I used it in a private company years ago.
I think it's mature now.
You can tell people, hey, you can change your desktop, oh, you can't log off or you can't power off, you know, things like that, you can do anything pretty much now.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you don't say save something on the desktop, it's saved on the server technically.
But there's, there's a lot of employees right now that use, um, a laptop, well, they have a laptop as the, kind of the brain and then they have a monitor so they can take their laptop to, you know, meetings and things like that. But that would be available for everybody and it's just, just very flexible, so.
One of the things that we don't start letting it creep, you know, letting it fill, you know, I like that, but I really want a laptop, you know, and then it starts creeping in and so later, you're back up to now, you're paying for both.
Well, I mean, some, some instances, you can't get around it, like for, for police department right now, laptop, it, it fits best in the vehicle, yes, it's all, but we could get.
This is only certain.
We can get, definitely get cheaper laptops, though, we don't have to have full-fledged, I can, you know, top-of-the-line spec laptops to last us, you know, three years, we'll just buy low-spec laptops and load the client. I think you can do it on a Chromebook, you know, for about two, three bucks.
Processing's done locally, it's all done on the server.
So.
Like you in that.
I don't have a problem with the system, I think, I think over time, it pays for itself after, after probably, I don't know, maybe four, five, six years, it probably pays for itself if you, if you don't let that creep back in.
Right. It's, yeah, it's just.
I think it'll just get better, too.
Exactly.
This is how things are gonna be done.
Right. Okay, thank you, Sean.
They might need to take a bathroom break.
Not sure.
Y'all take a five-minute break?
Well, what else did we have to talk about?
Um, well, Jeff still needs to go over here, his computer, all his computer budgets and all the different departments. And I don't know, you discussed some, but did you discuss all the com, computer-type improvements that are over in capital improvements instead of computer? I think you kind of went through that already.
Most of it.
Because, I mean, you touched on it when you went through police's and.
Right, I mean, the really big things that I've got is the, is the new firewall, a couple of new switches, um, and this hori, the thin client project.
Sounds great, let's come back and talk about it.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Yeah.
Let's take it, let's, let's take a break.
Personnel are, I mean, it's up to y'all.
I don't know.
Let me, let me, let me just hand out my, what, this is my, my vision.
And that's what I really need everybody to start with.
This is my vision in at least to have in three to five years for a full IT department.
And by the way, the IT department, we're putting customer service under IT because we're moving to that Q-Sense software, where we're gonna manage customer service and follow-up and tracking and all that, and that will be more of an IT, excuse me, IT managed.
Yeah, so definitely, they'll, they'll, they'll need our help to get started. What we're, we're wanting to build is a, is a nice three-one-one call center that all customer, that just to improve customer support.
And let me back up, what number, what number are we on, uh, budget, uh, category number?
I don't know where.
Well, this is gonna be found under, you're gonna, you're gonna have to get out a computer and you're gonna have to put in zero, zero, one, one hundred for the general admin, because his, um, these positions are in the general admin group. So if you put in zero, zero, one, one hundred, it'll be under salaries administrative.
Be expensive to all of the departments.
Does it need five oh three hundred?
Well, I think he was wanting to know about salaries.
I don't know the code.
It's zero, zero, one, one hundred and then it's account five oh oh eight oh when you get in there. Okay, so, um.
So I've, what, what my hope is for next year is we're gonna, I would like to publish a, a job for help desk manager and what my hope is that one of, uh, one of my employees steps up and applies for that position. But what I'm trying to do is get, get that top layer filled, the pink layer, um, and then as we grow, then we could add positions underneath the, uh, the pink layer. So it, that's, uh, consists of Sean, it would be consisting of Sean, a help desk manager and a network administrator. And I'm gonna hold off, try to hold off, uh, another year for the network administrator position, because I'm currently kind of fulfilling that role and I'm doing okay right now. But, but would like to get a help desk manager, because as we add more employees, um, our load increases, like for an instance, we had, um, eleven hundred and ninety-three tickets last year from employees, this year, we had eighteen hundred and ninety-seven. And honestly, we're not that good at logging our tickets and that's one thing the help desk manager is going to ensure, is that all, all cases are logged, um, that the, the customer, what, which our customer, our city employees, we, we, we see them as cu, our customers in a way, so we try to provide the best service we can. And I think by having a help desk manager, we'd be able to respond to, uh, issues faster, uh.
I want to add something to, to that, is the fact that, that we're training more with, with Munis and because of that, we're using Munis more. So that's where the increase comes to, and e, even with increased employees, I think more of it's just, we're using a lot more of Munis and its abilities.
Right, that's definitely true and, and as, as we grow, we could add new IT techs into the position, we'll have a help desk manager to be able to train them, get them on board. Because right now, with our, our new employees are just kind of tossed around between all of us and they're trying to learn as much as they can, but a help desk manager will ensure that, that you, our, our new IT techs would be trained properly and know what, you know, how to handle, handle cases. Uh, the other thing, uh, we'd like to see is a, uh, call center manager. Right now, our, our operators are spread between two different departments, um, Carol and Judy at utili, I'm sorry, Mona and Judy at the utilities are under me and Cynthia, Cindy is under, I believe, Jason. So we're going to try to, what I would like to do is have a call center manager, then have the operators report to this, the call center manager. And my hope is that one of the, uh, one of the current employees will step up and take this position as well.
And that's your citizen support manager on your.
Right.
And it's also part of the, the new technol, the new Q-Sense.
Right.
And, and there's other people that will be using Q-Sense, they just won't be exclusive to that, but there's, in every department, there's a person that I think takes most of the calls for that department. And I think I would, can see them using this, too, but maybe not reporting to you, but needing that training and help desk.
So everybody that's called the city has talked to either one of those three ladies and, um, it, they, I think they average around five hundred calls a day. The other day when the power went out, we had about, uh, I think over seventeen hundred calls in one day. It's a lot for them to do and I think, um, it, it, I think by having a help desk manager to keep, keep things on task or keep, keep track of things would, uh, improve overall citizen.
Response and.
Right.
Really accountability.
Exactly, because things do get lost when they, they forward it to, you know, email, they go to voicemail, it's, it's all over the place and we're trying to centralize it with that Q-Sense software. And so I just, I just think this position would, uh, benefit the, uh, customer support.
I was gonna say, it's gonna help the department heads a lot, too, because what happens is if they don't answer, then they get a, a voicemail and then they have to take the time to respond to the, the calls. This is really gonna manage, you answer the call, you're gonna handle it with a live person and that's really the direction we're trying to go with this software, but there does need to be somebody in charge of that.
Right, absolutely.
So I'm trying to find this in, in Munis under the details, under the salaries administrative and then I guess it's lumped into that item ninety.
It's number line twenty, Jack, and then forty, so it's the second and third lines, those are his two.
So you're saying then that between all this, what you're proposing, uh, you, you're not completing this entire work chart?
No, that's my, my three to.
Thousand six hundred and increases here.
Right, so, yeah, well, again, my hope is that current employees step up and, and apply for the position.
So that's why we put in the, I think it was talked about really as a promotion and.
A, a current employee in your department?
Yes.
But that's all these people like you down here in blue, right?
Right.
So that leaves a vacancy in blue, doesn't it?
It does, but we'll be okay for, for a year.
But, but for budgeting purposes, if you have a, are you gonna defund that position when you do that? Otherwise, you have, you do have to add the new position's total salary.
Uh, that's, I'm not sure how that works.
That, that's kind of a, a vacuum that's left, uh, which could lead to a much higher budget level.
Let me see if, uh.
We're not gonna fill the position once, once that position is vacated.
Right, well, see, but if we create the position and fund the position and you don't defund the other position.
You have to account for it.
You have to account for it, because you could technically change your mind and go in and, and, and council has no authority to, because we budgeted, to say, well, we're gonna fill that now and then you wind up with, with all these new positions.
If the intention is to not do it till later, you could zero that out and then put a note to add it for twenty twenty.
Actually, it's not been left in, it's, it's just been put in as a promotion and so it's not backfilling that old position. That's the way it is.
Call center manager. Yeah, it's one position.
The help desk manager.
Call center manager could be seen as a promotion if one of the ladies steps up and takes that position.
And then an additional position, citizen support manager.
I don't envision us needing four.
The citizen support manager is the call center manager?
Yes, yes.
You said it earlier.
We didn't know what to call it, we came up with all kinds of different names, I like three-one-one call center manager, but, uh, I think it's named something else.
I don't know how it went to the personnel board on the.
I can't recall either.
On the job description, I'm not real sure about that.
We probably do need to get on all on the same page with those names.
And would all those different management positions you were proposing be kind of working managers that are in there?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm a working director, you'll see me in bucket trucks, out of the marina, if you want, I mean, that's, we all, we're out, we're all out doing things.
I don't know how to, I'm just trying to figure out how to put that in there so that there's not a vacuum. In a position, how can we do that?
I think that that position is not, you can defund that position.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
You're not eliminating the position because it's, it's filled by the people.
Well, he's saying the.
You can't eliminate it before they're promoted, though.
So, no, whenever you pass the budget.
At the same time, you promote them, you defund it.
Right, when you pass the budget, that's usually how it happens.
Exactly.
Well, I was gonna say, well, that's what I mean, exactly, so then, so when you, when you pass the budget, you're, I think what you do is you just, uh, I think you have to fund for the new position and defund for the, for the old position, although they may not have been promoted yet.
The budget is just written for that promotion and not backfilling that current position.
And as long as we put it that way, it never is open, it's never funded.
Right.
Well, something, really, you want to bring us up, but I will, something that you were saying in the last meeting about how we had defunded a position. We, we did it because we didn't want that vacuum filled, uh, back in twenty sixteen, I mean, that's really why we did it, because we were afraid that if we didn't.
But I wouldn't know better, I'm just new.
No, I know you didn't, but that, but that was the reason.
But, but defunding the assistant superintendents of the utilities, too, was something that, you know, when, uh, Richard Peterson came in, he said, we do need those positions. And that was where we had to, we didn't want to eliminate our assistants, so they were promoted to superintendents, anyway.
All right, are you guys good with that?
Well, it's ju, it's kind of like one of my positions, you know, last year, the person that was holding that position, um, I worked in the budget for her to be promoted into accounting manager, but once that happened, we didn't have another position, which was city accountant, so now this year, I'm having to add city accountant back.
I gotta break it down like you have it here, I, I like your, uh, chart and I, and I think that, you know, your call centers is for an enterprise as big as we have and for the customer service that we have provides, it's, it's a pretty good number and then I look at your, you know, your, um, number of IT positions themselves and techs, it's just, it, it's really not. Too extravagant for the amount of hardware, software, data that you have to manage.
Right, and so my goal is just go ahead and get that top structure in place and as we grow, we just add more of the blues, uh, positions in and to, you know, take on the new load that we get as we hire more employees.
So is that network tech, this one, Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
Is that being added? I don't see that.
No, 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 that's, that's what I envision seeing, a complete vision within five years.
Yeah, right, right, sure, okay, so I, I was gonna say, because I, I didn't disagree, I didn't see the funding for it, didn't I?
Right, uh, really, what's new on there that's being affected this year is just the help desk manager and the.
And then the promotion would be, uh, here?
Mm-hmm.
The promotion.
Yes, sir. There and on the far right one, the, the one in pink.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Question, Council?
Okay, if we want to go back and enter in code five oh three oh oh, the. Okay, if we wanna go back and enter in code five oh three oh oh, those are all the, uh, budgets, uh, for computer expenses.
Under your object line though.
And nothing really is much different than the police one. I mean, it has, uh, you know, there's not the CAD support. Well, actually, there's CAD support for some of them, but that's computer aided design.
Do we have that on page here?
You would have to look at every single department, like flip pages at their computer expenses.
They're, they're the, those are the ones that goes in, that go into the departments. Those.
Right.
Okay, those are departmental. That's okay, good. So for instance, we should see, um, the policeman was the O.
Zero zero one one five zero.
One one five zero. That, that matches up to the, yeah, okay.
All right. So our two, our two biggest ones are, are the general fund, well, general fund and, uh, police department, general fund, followed by the utilities. Then you have the miscellaneous departments that have just small amounts in there. We just put a little bit in there in case they need a new monitor or mouse or something.
General fund's O O one, one zero zero, probably?
That's right.
Yes. The only thing.
I kind of view this stuff as almost, um, at, at a council level, we're not, we're not equipped to, you know, say, "Yeah, we don't need that, we don't need that, we don't need that."
Yeah, I, I had to make some cuts, so there's some things that I wanted, but, uh, we'll wait till next year.
Had to go through cuts like four times.
I did a good job though. I did. I got it down.
But we are gonna do it differently next year, because the way he has it laid out, it's a lot of detail.
Yeah.
I mean, for each department.
Right. So if anything stands out, I, I'll be happy to answer questions, but it's.
Yeah, is there anything that you would wanna point out? I'm just, you know, kind of looking at the, um, all the, did the, uh, general government, O one one, O O?
Yeah, there's not really much in here that's different than police. We do need to talk about the communications though, the telephones. How we're gonna do that this year.
Well.
We need to get back to the overall to look at the numbers.
Don't need to let them put in, I wonder if we're gonna have to put in a different, uh, object numbers.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna look at it. Yeah, I'm saying I am. So the, the.
I mean, you could just talk about it real quick and then.
We looked at the police, O one one five O. And then I guess those are the large numbers, the.
Two.
O O two, O O three, and then the.
It's a gas electric.
Those four are the utilities.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in there that, uh, we need to be peeking at right now? I'm trying to shorten this up a little bit, but there's a lot of detail.
There's not really many divi- deviation between the police, utility and, and utilities.
Yeah, the, the bulk of it is things is just divvied up.
Right.
Proportionately, right? And it's, so it's repetitive. It just carries through.
Very repetitive. Yeah, it's broken up.
And a lot of it's support that, that you just have to have.
Yeah, server support, licensing, backup system.
And your municipal support is just the same, very consistent. Your, your office, email, archive, and stuff's kind of just.
There's chrono support, support for everything.
Man, we should have a lot of CAD.
And that's actually the computer aided design in, in these other ones.
That's right.
Yeah. We've got two users of CAD. Three users.
Anybody care to go through the details of any of those? You wanna weigh in a minute? Kevin says we can get a firewall cheaper.
You can go, you can get real cheap firewalls.
Yeah, they don't work too well. Kind of like the real ones. Put cheap on it and see what happens.
Why is the, why is their firewall so much cheaper than the, the police department's firewall that they're trying to put the ammunition in?
Different firewall.
If, if y'all are good with the computer, I, I'm, we can go to the communications budget, which, um, we've changed the name this year. It was telephone. Um, and that object's five oh three eight oh.
Same line, okay, object.
Object, mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that one, that one spans across all departments, like the computer.
Five oh three eight oh.
The big thing that we're gonna do this year, or I hope to do, um, with council approval, of course, um, we, historically, we've had our own telephone hardware. What we, what I'd like to do is kind of move to a model that all cities are adopting. It's basically, it's, we're outsourcing our phone system. And you pay a, uh, an X dollar amount per user that can range anywhere between, I've heard estimates between seven dollars to twenty-five dollars per user. And so the.
Is that per how often?
As, as long as the, the user is using the, the service. So if the, the employee leaves, that, that seat leaves, you know.
What number is that under this number, the, the phone?
It's split up between all of it.
Object five oh three eight oh.
I'm gonna follow three eight oh, but it's all, it's, so a phone is a component of each one of these communications budgets?
Right.
Okay, so it's not one of those numbers, but it's.
All.
Potentially huge in some place. I like, certainly I'm not playing.
And I've actually split them out evenly. Like, I know who my current telephone users are, so I was able to split it out to where each department's paying the true, it would be paying a true amount, um, for their current users. So right now, we're having to, we, we have two phone systems. We've got support for those two phone systems. We've got, we, if we're not gonna move to this model, I'll be having to buy all new telephones this year because they're no longer supported.
We just did this a few years ago.
We're, it's been a while. It's, uh, been six years ago. Then we would have to buy lines from AT&T. So there's a lot of cost that goes into a phone system. This greatly simplifies it. It's just X, it's just X amount per user. That's it. And so I've got a, I've got a bid in the works right now to go ahead and get that bid out for my specs that we need. Um, uh, I've got a couple of recommendations. Um, I've talked to Coffee County, a guy up there that, that currently uses this model. He's, he's happy with it.
Now, this is, let me just back up. This is all landlines we're talking here.
Exactly, desktop telephones.
Is that, if I'm looking under the O O one one O O fifty-three eighty, that would be.
Hosted telephone.
Hosted, it's the te- hosted telephone. That's what I wanna know. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So for that, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, that's for the general phone.
There's not a number. I don't see a number of users in there or a number of units or anything like that. And not that I needed to see it, but has, has there a way for me to?
I should have probably done that, but, um, we have, we, I think we have right now a hundred and seventy-five desktop users, desktop phone users.
And that's for the whole city?
For the whole city.
Not for that one?
Not for that one.
Not for that one category.
General is, is probably, our, um, general government has the most phones at sixty-three. Uh, so what I did is take the number of sixty-three and multiply it by twenty, twenty dollars per unit. I went on the high end. And I hope to come way under that.
So the hosted phone right now is at two hundred and forty dollars per user?
Per year.
Per year.
Right.
Twenty dollars per month then. That's not too bad.
And with, with the competitive bid, hopefully we can get a lot lower than that.
Yeah, that's not bad.
The other thing that's different this year, we don't have Southern Link in there, so Verizon shot way up since, um, we're utilizing them for radio and, and mobile phone and car, uh, patrol vehicle, uh, internet access. Um.
How many Verizon phones is in that? Is that listed in the detail?
No, I can get you a number. We, pretty much every utility employee, every police officer, um.
With this one budget, I mean, this is this one.
Yeah, it's.
Uh, department, whatever it's, I'm gonna call it just general, is, uh, twenty, almost twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yep. The, the bill's about nine thousand dollars a month right now.
Is that, was that Verizon? Is that all captured? Is every Verizon user captured in that?
Just in general admin.
General admin.
Okay. So it, it, it's, it, no matter where, where they work, no matter what department they're in?
No, I mean, utilities had, like, uh, if you look at the gas department, they have their breakout.
So, so, so this is just the general government portion of it?
Right, and.
How many users is twenty-five thousand dollars? And it may not be that bad when you get it, break them down to the month. I mean, it's two thousand a month.
I thought you put them in each department, Jeff, did you not? The Verizon, like the streets department.
I do break them out. I don't, you know, I don't think I did break that out.
Verizon's in.
Cause we've, we've always done it with just utilities, general government, and police, but now.
No, I don't, well, there's Verizon, PTT smartphones, but this, this other Verizon, I think you just put it in police and general admin.
The utilities and general admins. So general admin's probably a little inflated.
Yeah, general admin needs to be.
Okay, so the general admin, yeah, that came out to be quite a big number.
Cause planning department, building department's also grouped into that.
Exactly. We'll have to work on that and get it.
Yeah. It's general government. Right.
Yeah, okay, so O O three fifty-three eighty is which department, which utilities?
That's electric.
Electric.
Okay, so, sorry, electric. It's about the same, almost exactly the same as.
Yeah, that's just sort of what I've done.
Yeah, you just put it all in general admin and police in general.
Yeah.
Well, in O O two, it's twenty-five, seven, thirty-nine. In O O three, it's twenty-five, seven, thirty-nine. In general admin, it was twenty-five, seven, thirty-nine. That's just part of the budget maturing and, and.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's, it's.
What you've been doing for three years now is slowly getting everything more departmentalized.
And Jeff, bless his heart, I don't feel for him. He has to go into everybody's budget and put all these numbers instead of just working with one. He's got to go into every different, and remember to do it in everybody's budget.
But I think it'll be easier next year, hopefully. It should copy over.
I think so. I think so.
So I'm not too concerned.
So you kind of did, it looks like some type of even distribution of Verizon.
Yeah, I think historically that's how we've done it. And I, I, that's my fault. I would probably need to go out and do a better breakout.
It's okay. I'm just trying to understand. I'm, I'm, what I'm really trying to get at is, what is our total bill annually? And then how many users do we have? And it's up to y'all to figure out who gets them. I mean.
I can estimate right now we have two hundred and fifty devices. So that, that, that's, that we, our devices consist of, uh, modems that go into the backup patrol vehicles. The officer will also have a smartphone with a radio. And we've also, the, the middle device is like a phone that I would carry. It's just a smartphone to down to the utility employee that just has a kind of a dumb, basic phone with a, just a push-to-talk service for radio communication.
Can you, is that something you could provide us?
Absolutely.
Jeff, just a total number and total number of users?
Yeah.
I mean, cause we're all users, you know, we, we all use a cell phone. We know about what they cost, and that tells us if it's rational or if we need to be negotiating better prices.
The thing is with, with these is you have to buy them outright. They give you half off cost, but you don't get to pay it over a period of time. That's where it costs you. But I will say that, that all of this that's broken out now by department, um, even though it could be fine, two more, but it all just was lumped into water before.
Yeah, water paid.
This is one of the many expenses that utilities paid before this term.
So water just paid to everybody's cell phone?
Everybody, the whole thing went to water.
Well, they got the revenue on the towers. That's, that's.
No, that's why, yeah.
Okay.
From the tower lease is paid for that, you know.
Gotcha.
So we got, uh, two hundred and thirty-six active devices right now.
How many?
Two hundred and thirty-six.
But I'll work with Jeff and we'll get the Verizon spread or anything else we need to and.
Email, just email it to him.
Sure, absolutely.
Just send it out to everybody.
Yeah. It's reasonable. I mean, the, the, a basic smartphone plan is, is about forty bucks more.
And those are the things that, you know, treasurer will also like keep an eye on, you know, for deals and things such as that.
Yeah, and the Verizon is usually state contract.
It's access.
Yeah, state contract, and it's usually much better than what you could get retail.
I think it's half off.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Half off for state contract.
Oh, half off for retail.
Is that unlimited, unlimited?
It is unlimited everything, yeah. Cause all, I mean, our officers, they did, they, they actually changed that, kudos to Verizon. They changed that this year because that, they used to be capped at twenty gigs and they couldn't, they couldn't work any longer.
So we're going through the state, you know, that right now?
Yeah, it was the state bid is unlimited.
Okay.
It's a good rate.
Okay.
And we, and our phone lines actually do get priority over, um, regular phone lines as well during emergencies. Our calls will go through, whereas maybe your phone would, they're, they're, be on a government plan. We're giving priority for the lines.
Um, what else? Council questions on this? Kyra, I know you can point something out that maybe we haven't looked at.
I think we've looked at the, the, the big items. The rest of it's just the stuff that's carried over from last year, renewals and support.
All right. I think we're done with that. It is six o'clock, but I see library, do we have that on the schedule for today?
We did appropriations and the miscellaneous at the library and, I mean, do we have that on there?
I think whether they're here. Y'all still on?
I'm willing to stay. I don't wanna, they, they waited. I really don't wanna send them home and tell them to come back. No, I think that would be appreciated.
And fire. Woo!
We don't, we don't really keep those, the library books. And, well, we don't at all. Not, not really.
Y'all wanna come forward, library?
So it's not, you're not gonna see it in UNIS. We don't keep their books in our system.
So you'll see is.
Is that appropriation? That's the only thing you'll see is the appropriation.
But if you've got your other.
Well, I broke out other stuff.
Email it to y'all. Wow, good.
Yeah.
What page is that on?
It is on page twenty.
Oh, so this isn't the one we put together though?
I do, I think I do have the lot. Well, this library printed out. Let me see if it's behind the utilities. I thought that we, I don't know that it got printed out. It's not good. I don't know if y'all can see this screen, but I do have it pulled up on the screen right here. Um.
Joe, can you send it to a network printer and I can print copies?
Okay.
Just have to email you the whole thing. I'll just have to, do you wanna?
That one page, can you print that? It's in that to a network printer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're gonna print us out for that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Which one is it? Is it City Hall sharp?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you do that one above it, it'll take it to the one that's in.
Other one by Cindy. Same. Okay. Sorry about that.
And so fire department, we'll get to you as well, hopefully. Does anybody like have to leave at a certain time? You did midnight? Midnight, okay.
Robert's just gonna camp out here.
I have to be out of here in a little bit.
Sleeping in my car.
She's taking a nap, you can't. I'm just, I mean, looking up there. Uh, there's, I don't see any twenty nineteen actuals, uh, for those revenues.
Yeah, they are right there. Um, I think, well, we got this off of what was sent by the library.
Is that, was that a number that those would have added up to?
Yeah, I think so. Cause we didn't, we didn't necessarily know exactly what came from what, so we just put a, a grand total. I believe that's what we did.
Did you get that from the owner?
I think whatever. I think whatever you sent me.
I just, I sent you a budget.
Where's the revenue portion?
Well, all you need to be really looking at is that eight fifty-nine, this number right here compared to this number and this number. You know, and then of course our payment to them is right here, and this is the, the requested amount for twenty-twenty.
Okay. I mean, you scroll down to the bottom, when she's gonna come, she'll have the whole layout, but you scroll to the bottom and in gray are the things that we pay over and above the appropriation.
Yeah, the appropriation is only for the operation, operating expenses.
But this is also additional operation because it has, I don't know if it has IT and- But it also, it, it goes back to two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
It didn't go on one page, it should be going like this. Uh-oh, I'm sorry.
We got some side by side.
So the, on the very bottom is the total city subsidies.
And I don't know that, this didn't have the percentage on here either. No. I don't know that. Which, which percentage are you talking about mayor?
Well, I was just saying, I thought it had, well, I think there's some information on the very bottom missing potentially, but anyway. I'll have to go back to my notes, but what I'm trying to, to show here is that on the bottom for the total city subsidy, again, I'm, I'm pointing this out because right now we are presenting a self-sufficient budget, budget. We're not using utility profits. But in two thousand seventeen, the actual total spent that year, and this doesn't include capital projects, a little over a million each year. And now we're, the proposed budget for twenty-twenty is one million, one hundred and twelve dollars roughly. And the, but we don't get lease income or a percentage of the utilities paid anymore, which is fine, but those are things that we still have to add in to the total subsidy. Where is the internal revenue?
Um, if you go up to the very top.
Fines, law books, gifts, state aid.
Yeah, and I, and I think instead of just, you know, quickly, instead of trying to figure out where each revenue went, we just, you know, did it-
We just did it, but, but the total is-
Thirty-nine.
Right.
Thirty-one, thirty-one's what's projected.
And that, and that's what we have to look at, and with the library's help, is that we're, we're subsidizing almost a hundred percent. And, you know, now that the city's self-sufficient, every little dollar counts because whatever the library can't help contribute, we're having to cut things for the city that we critically need. And I think we've got this down to about a thirteen-thousand-dollar balance, but we've made some adjustment, adjustments. But this is where the things get a little bit more important for every department to try to get more and more sustainable because the city is, has very, very critical needs right now. And we had to cut so, so much from each department.
I'll, I'll put some figures together for you, council. The, um, the total, if you look at that bottom line, total city subsidy of one point, one-one-two million. If you compare that to twenty-seventeen of one point oh-two-eight, that's an eight-point-two percent increase. If you remove the revenue that was offsetting, say, last year's-
It's already in there. The, the very bottom number includes all that.
It, it, I know it, it does, but, you know, it, it's, it's no fault of the libraries.
No.
But the revenue stream has disappeared, so if you bring that down, if you had that revenue in twenty-twenty, it would have brought the total down to one point oh-seven million instead of one point one-one-two. And your one point oh-seven, again, one point oh-seven, divided by one point, roughly a one point oh-four, is a, is a two-point-nine percent increase. My point being that, you know, the library shouldn't be held to any tighter standard than what these other departments are being held to.
It's not as tighter standard, it's, it's that, I mean, most libraries do have boards that fundraise. I mean, most libraries have a big portion of their funding.
But, but let me finish my, my line of thinking here, so, you know, all that could be, all that could be said, all that could be true. But if you go back to what the increase is over, say, even twenty-seventeen, it's, it's an extremely small percentage compared to these very large percentages for all of our other departments. And yeah, it's a subsidy, but it's an amenity like a, like a, like a park or, or something else, so.
Well, libraries were never intended to be fundraisers for cities.
That most libraries have, are not, are not subsidized, because this is, this serves a region, it, most libraries are not a hundred percent subsidized by the city though. And that's, that's what we just need to look at to see how we can all contribute to, to help because every department had to go through serious cuts to balance the budget. And, and that's what we have to look at, I mean, because that's, we're not doing anything near budget.
We have not had an increase, this would be the fourth year. Our, none of our employees have received merit raises, raises or any kind of raises in four years, this would be the fourth year. So I believe the city employees, if we're gonna, you know, try to do apples with apples, city employees have received raises and merit raises.
We, we've passed every budget that y'all have given us, and every one of them have had increases in it.
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's what it just said in your budget presentation.
No, you have not-
No, no, we, we've never cut it.
No, you have never cut it, but you have never increased it, this would be the fourth year, we would get level funding.
Right, I, we've just always approved what you've given us, so that's not-
That's not necessarily true.
I'm, I'm just talking about for the operating, since I've been in office, I've never said you're, you were cutting anything.
No, I'm not saying you ever have cut our appropriation, but I have, I am saying you haven't given us the increases we asked for. And Jimmy, maybe that was a-
I have no idea.
Last year, I think they had sought an increase that, um-
Like two or three percent?
Yeah, and so-
Yeah, I didn't cut that.
I think, I think it just got input as, as level funding, but, but they have had level funding for three or four years, and we probably don't have any other departments that have done that, but-
But other departments, you have to understand, and I'm not, this is all business for me. When you're, when you're trying to balance a city budget, it's all business, cause I have to sit with every director and tell them, we can't do this. You know, and we've cut, 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 and we went through, I don't know how many cuts to get, I mean, we started off with a huge, huge deficit. But the reality is, and that's on the third page, cause I didn't know it had this on third page, is that the, the city subsidizes the library ninety-six-point-three percent. And there's no other library in our area that is subsidized that way, that's, that's all I'm saying, is we've just got to figure out what other funding is there that's available to the library. Because that, we can't do that, cause y'all, y'all run as a component. If you ran as a department, there's lots of things that we can do to save money and give y'all more money from, for the things that you want.
And I think that's a conversation that we can have outside of the budget meeting as well, but I, I'm, I'm just gonna give y'all my opinion of this. And I, I feel like it is a very paltry increase. We can talk about fundraising later, how it could be self-sufficient, but now we've got to get the budget passed.
I didn't say self-sufficient, just contributing more than, contributing more than three percent.
But it's, it is, compared to every other department in the city, the increase over the last many years is a fraction of what everybody else's increase has been. And I would, um, and, and, and I would support it, I would support this budget, I just-
All I'm saying, this is in the budget a hundred percent. All I'm saying is these are things that we have to talk about, because right now, if, if you're gonna cut anything from any other budget, th- those are the things we have to look at. Because every department, I hope, is, is important, you know, and there are other ways that-
It's not in there because I'm looking at their request of eight fifty-nine, four oh-one, and I'm seeing in the proposed budget, eight eighteen, four seventy-seven.
That's what it's been.
So what I'm advocating, just me personally, is to make it eight fifty-nine, four oh-one.
Eight fifty-nine, four oh-one from what?
For the appropriation from the city.
For the appropriation.
That's what we requested.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't think that's, that's in there.
If you look at page twenty, mayor, of our budget, go over to our budget.
Oh, it's in here.
That is what, that is only what the library requested.
Oh, okay.
The number that's in our budget is eight eighteen, four seventy-seven, the same amount from the nineteen budget.
Right, well, I mean, the things that we, we want to look at too are the fact that, you know, I think the, the employees get more holidays paid and more vacation. I mean, you know, tho- those are the things too that we just want to make sure that we're matching, cause it's just not fair to our city employees when it's different. And then y'all do have cash on hand that can contribute to it. Could contribute to the operating.
We don't, we do contribute with what we get in, that income. The other, anything else we have is donations.
Well, I'm just saying the balance, the end-of-year balance in two thousand eighteen was five hundred and fifty-one thousand on hand.
Well, that is donations that are given to the library to be used for collection needs of the library. It is not part of the, um, it's not money we can go out and spend on anything we want to.
It's not for operations?
No, it's not for operations, it is restricted funds, and so is the Friends, and if we happen to get some from the Foundation, so is the Foundation. Those funds are restricted funds, and so that's why we can't just say, oh, well, you know, our hands are tied on all that.
Right, I just, all I know is whatever-
And even the state has-
Libraries are, are run, I mean, you know, they, they all have the percentages that, that, they fund, I mean, I don't know if you call it fundraising or not, but those are just things, this is not anything but finances, you know.
I, I'll propose eight fifty-nine, four oh-one.
I'm fine with that. Tamara, the short on that bottom line, the cash on hand.
Where's that?
On the sheets that were just printed, I don't know if you got-
These came from your, your financials.
Twenty-seventeen, there was four sixty-two, and twenty-eighteen, there was five fifty-one. I don't, it doesn't show anything for twenty-nineteen.
We haven't done that audit yet.
Okay.
I mean, we haven't done our own audit yet.
Some of those funds that we have, like from the Friends, they've recently given us permission to use some of those funds to go for the upstairs. So we're, we're counting on using some of those for furnishings and all.
Gotcha.
And, um, this, you know, we're going after grants, we're hoping to get an Impact One Hundred grant for that. So, um, a lot of our resources that we can handle will be- Train, the new carpet for the youth services?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we had a, we had a donation to have new carpet put in youth services, and so we're trying to get that all together, but that's what we have to use that for.
So what about, you know, if you go to the cash on hand and you look at the line item that says books, periodicals and audiovisual, can those donations not be used to purchase items such as that?
Yes, they can if they're specified for that. So, and also, Jack, um, a lot of our donations are for materials in memory of so-and-so. A lot of that is for that.
So I, I think it would, it would be nice to offset some of that, if possible, to spend some of those reserves for something where it can be.
What this does not reflect is any money towards technology, so that's what we've used our Friends, but that's the only reason-
Your expenses list is very short compared to what, I know you have.
That's the only reason we are able to buy computers. It's not, there are, a lot of our databases, those kind of things, come through the Friends, the Friends are the reason, and the grants we've written are the only reasons we have updated technology.
And that's, and that's not listed on here, if you had to put a number on the Friends and the chocolate and champagne, all the fundraiser, how much?
I would say over, well, over the last two years, about seventy-five thousand. And some of that I've held in reserve for the upstairs, so I will, I mean, that's, but we're gonna need it when we move, we've given us permission to do upstairs.
But those are the things that, just to, to, since we are right now funding so much, we just have to know the whole picture, just-
Yeah, and I'm telling you the whole, the whole picture.
But, but these things I added, I mean, they're not usually in the budget, these are the things I added.
Yeah.
And, and another expense that's not on here, and it's just an open-ended expense, is IT and phones, I'm not sure if, anyway, I don't, do we ever get that information?
I think it all goes into that one library, they have a line item in the general admin that says library, and I think pretty much, you know, anything that's related to library is coded there. Whether it be maintenance or phone.
Or IT, alright, so.
Does anybody want to make any recommended changes?
I'm very open to answering any questions.
All right, we're, we're done. Eight fifty-nine, four oh-one. Not set a phone, and then passed a budget.
It's been changed in Munus, and I think so.
Do you need me any longer?
Nope.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can I add that the foundation is working diligently to build an endowment to help? We're in a nascent stage, so, you know, we don't really have anything at this point. The Friends work like the delves.
Right, I know they do, we know they do, they, they're awesome. I would just maybe make a suggestion, and I remember being the president of feetboard of directors for a while. We ran into problems when every donation we got was restricted to this or that, and we kind of frowned upon, you know, having everything that was given to us being designated. Because the board knew where the needs were, and this only, this will help you tremendously as well, because, you know, you know where the needs are, and if everything's restricted, you just can't always meet the needs. And you wind up with this big fund balance that you can't use when, truthfully, you should be using some of that.
But, yeah, and we are using it, I mean-
But I think all of that just needs to be out here for, for, cause these, these are, these are copies for citizens. Oh, you're right, but no, I mean, your budget that you gave us, you, was earlier than, than this, but the thing is, is with Board of Directors, their biggest role is funding. And that's how every library board is.
That's not necessarily true.
It's, it's every library that, that we've reached out to, and Lynn, I did a lot of them too.
Let's, let's, let's cover that on another day, we've got some other people waiting, we need to get to it, and thank y'all very much. All right, fire department?
We want to make sure that we can cover it in the future.
Please, uh, accept my apology for my-
Fire is on page seven, and in Munus, it's zero, zero, one, two hundred.
You have that thirty minutes left. Give me that number again.
Zero, zero, one, two hundred.
Seven thirty-nine, um, I'm just, I'm just gonna jump into this. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, uh, what I- I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, uh, what I did, uh, and, um, Robert, didn't you and I discuss this? We, we, we went through this one, right? For whatever reason, I think we started at the front, it was on page seven, so we got it at one time. And, uh, the only thing that did jump out at me, and Mayor, I know you're gonna jump in this, and that's perfectly fine, the purchases of vehicle and equipment is only seven thousand, and I don't know if it's somewhere else in the budget, I know that the Fire Department had requested two fire trucks, and that was approximately a million dollars.
They're not, it's not new trucks, so impact fees can't pay for it, so we had to balance the budget.
Hold, 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 I understand, hang on. So I, I thought, we can afford that. And I said, "Well, you know, so what I'd like to hear from you is, do you really need a, a, one truck right now? How, how desperately do you need it?" And then, I, I, same thing with the library almost, is I know you have some cash, and I did speak to your treasurer, and he at least seemed amenable to sharing the cost of a, a truck. I'm just gonna throw a number out for discussion, so, uh, if it was five hundred thousand dollars for a truck, and I think it was maybe five hundred and thirty-one thousand.
That's about right.
Five hundred and thirty-one thousand is the number. And then I said, "Can you come up with two hundred thousand? If we come up with three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one thousand may bully your budget, I don't know, but that's as a talk."
Where do you wanna cut on other things? Because they, we, we haven't received.
This is exactly why every time when I've been getting that, I knew we were gonna get to some of these things that ultimately in the budget, and, you know, in three hundred thousand out of, you know, three hundred million.
If Kim would talk about this, it, it just, what, what's the, the county aborum pays for, and what it's designated to pay for?
Well, it's, I mean, they, they get, um, around two hundred thousand dollars a year, and it's, the law allows it to be spent for equipment. And, um, in my understanding with the meeting we have is they actually have a note because they purchased a fire department, they built a.
You built a fire station.
They built a fire station, and then that's what the note that they're using their aborum money to pay for.
Well, asking them to do this cuts their, their reserves in half. I mean, so it's not, it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty big lick to the Fire Department.
We can't, we can't pay this out of reserves. What, what was put in the budget cannot be paid out of reserves. It's replacing.
But you mentioned, um, doing a lease on it?
That's the reason it is a zero on there, is, is a lease, but, um, I mean, that's gonna be the Council's decision if they want to do lease. Um, the leases we currently have done, it was passed in a previous budget, and so, um...
But I've seen every department come up here with a huge Christmas list and get, and I know it's probably been cut some, but when it gets to us, we have not turned down a single thing yet that I've seen.
I know that, but we, th- this Fire Department gets two funding sources and only one's being used.
But it's still a need.
No, no, that's.
It's, whether it's, whether, however they get their funding, it's, it's still a need.
We don't know, because we don't have audited financials.
We have a budget each year that we do for the, uh, uh, aborum account, tax account is what we call it, um.
Why can't we see it? That's the, that's the big thing.
And each year, we put the budget together, and we operate off that throughout the year. It starts in the calendar year. Um, we, it's somewhere around three hundred thousand, a hundred of which, and it comes, you know, we, we, our budget each year is somewhere around a hundred and eighty thousand or so, because we try to keep some in reserve in case they're, in case we have, um, an issue, an issue where the city, for whatever reason, couldn't cover it, we'll be able to cover that.
We've always covered it. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is we've just got to figure out, the city is self-sustaining now, we have to have available to us all funding sources.
It's like the, the Fire Department just spent, what, forty-something thousand dollars to finish the rescue, because we didn't get enough, we didn't ask for enough.
Right, and we ended up spending forty-something thousand dollars out of tax money for that. This year's tax account for that.
This, this truck that's five hundred and thirty-one, is that a, that's not a new truck?
No, that, that one would be a brand-new truck, um, it would be a pumper truck to replace one of the nineteen eighty-nines that, that, uh, we currently have in service.
From, from all the requests that I've seen, it's come through us in the last two budget meetings, you know, and the total, uh, general fund budget is north of thirty million dollars. I, I.
No, it's not. Wait, you're talking about the city?
Yeah. Is, is it not?
No. You got the ready day fund? You have capital improvement?
You're talking about expenses right now?
Yes.
You're talking about the budget?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about cash.
Thirty million, seven thirty-four.
Right.
And the expenditures, uh, and then there's some more revenue down at the bottom, and there's thirty-one, almost thirty-two million for total expenditures.
But that impact fee is in there, and, um, there's reserves for capital improvements. I mean, there's, there's, there's phones that are offsetting on the bottom.
We couldn't find three hundred thousand dollars and thirty-one million.
Actually, the ask was a million dollars.
Exactly.
The budget.
And, and that's why I'm saying that I thought that was too much, and I'm, I'm trying to, trying to be mindful of what, what they do by saving us three and a half to four million dollars in salaries every year, not to mention, we don't have to pay for fire stations, we don't have to pay for sleeping quarters. We do subsidize this.
It's the total wrong, uh, what you're talk, saying right now is not the right communication, because if we didn't serve, I know that, but it's not right, because you're not, you, you wouldn't go from this to hiring fifty-something, uh, employees. If we're only using city funds for the operating, for, for the Fire Department, then you would have to look at just having a Fire Department for the city. You wouldn't hire fifty-five people for that. So, I mean, this is, if we're gonna have.
Then cut that number in half, see, okay, whatever, it's two million. It's.
If you were to man every station, you'd have to hire a minimum three per station.
All of those stations are for the whole area.
Right, but if you manned every station at a minimum, and NFPA standards say a minimum of three firefighters for safety reasons per truck.
We wouldn't have five if we were just city. All I'm saying is, we've got to consider.
You wouldn't have four stations?
Five stations, if we were, four, I'm just saying you wouldn't have that if we were only serving municipal limits.
You would have to, ISO, ISO required that, and we're covering the city limits.
I know, we're not, we're, we're covering a huge.
We go on the jurisdiction, but the, but the ISO is figured based on our city limits, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if we don't do that, we don't have the stations we have, we'll lose our ISO rating.
Yes.
So it's not, what it seems.
Well, all I'm saying, the thing is, is we're, we're talking about something where we don't have any information on the county park, because we've never been given this information, and, you know, y'all can shake your heads all you want, but if you, if you can't look at a department that has other, it's, it's like leaving out impact fees. We're not ever gonna use our impact fees. The, these are, these are, these are aborum taxes collected.
I think that, um, by, you know, asking them to pay two hundred thousand dollars towards a new fire engine, and I know that they've been asking for a new fire engine for years, and so I, I have to trust that they need this engine.
So being.
And the fact that we're only having to pay three hundred, I'm, I'm saying three hundred and thirty-one thousand out of five hundred and thirty-one is yet once again an example of us not having to fully fund it, and it's, it's a bargain for the city, because if they were a city Fire Department, we would have to pay five hundred and thirty-one thousand.
So are, are you saying then, we are only going to fund this forever and never be able to be shown anything else as far as funding, except what you tell us?
Oh, I have no control over that.
Because, I mean, it, legally, you have to have audited financials every year.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, by law.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think y'all have any.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Well, the ones that we were given were not audited.
Can I, listen, can I hear from Council? I don't know, I mean, we, we gotta pass, the Council gotta pass this budget.
Can I say something real quick, Jack? The reason we put two in, we don't need two. The reason we put two in is Chris did the research, and there was gonna be what percentage?
A ten percent increase on cost.
So what we're trying to do is save the city money, because obviously.
But save us money, that's what I'm saying. You've got to look at y'all's budget too, what you get from the county.
Well, the Fire Department has always supplied the fire stations. We paid for every fire station we have. We, we own our own property, and, and they.
We don't have an agreement, though. We have to have an agreement of using all of, all of the funds to look at it.
Let's just try to stay on this point, point. Go ahead, yes.
Well, what, actually, what I was saying was, Chris did the research, and we're saving about ten percent if you were to buy them both at the same time. So we really don't need the two, we can go up, but, you know, in reality, they're nineteen eighty-nine trucks. At some point, we need to get rid of both of them, there's no doubt about it, but we could get by with just one. Am I correct?
That's correct, for now.
And I'm, I'm saying, so, Council, the, the, you know.
The price for one is five hundred and thirty-one.
Five hundred and thirty-one. I threw out a number of three thirty-one. I was told you had about four hundred thousand in the bank, and if you spent half of what you had in the bank, which to me is a reasonable request, you're, you're left with that, and because you might have to buy the, the other one, you know, next year if you have a major failure.
We'll have, I mean, obviously, I'll have to take it to the floor, to the members for, for approval on that, but.
How do those get sold? Those, do they go through gov deals, or is that something different?
So I did the research on those trucks. We'd be lucky if we got ten, fifteen thousand for them, lucky.
What?
We'll, we'll do it and make more. We'll, we'll, we'll handle that through the fleet.
Yeah, but they're really not worth anything. I've researched them on gov deals, I've researched them on other places for sell fire trucks, and they're just really not worth anything anymore.
Yeah, but you can't sell it to another municipality, the poor municipality.
That's the best bet. The best bet is to try to do that and maybe get, maybe get eighteen, twenty thousand for Lucky, but you're not gonna get more.
That's why we.
There's gotta be a millionaire out there that wants to pay for one to ride around.
Well, what's sad is, we maintain them so well, they really are worth more to, to us, and we would think they'd be worth more to someone else.
We can also sell them with a reserve.
You'd think you'd get more for them, but in reality, they, they don't look at that, they look at how old they are.
That's sad.
Wow.
All right, so back to the Council. I, I really would like to hear what y'all are thinking. I, I basically said what I was feeling, my best, so I'm thinking, I wanna hear what y'all are thinking. I'm fine with adding three thirty-one and having to pay two hundred.
We gotta figure out how to pay for it, just like the, the land that y'all just bought.
Yep, we're working on that.
The, the numbers that I'm already looking at that have been cut, y'all have already cut two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that was some done with the pre-meetings.
Right, exactly. Well, two hundred of it was our own doing.
Some with, some with y'all too, so, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand cuts already.
Jimmy, Kevin, I'm not, I mean, what do y'all have?
I think it's a steal at this deal. It's the same as grant money to me. Exactly the same as grant money. Whatever has a problem with grants shows up, we're paying twenty percent to have this deal, a hundred instead of paying a hundred percent.
This is paying sixty percent on the dollar.
This is exactly the same.
Sixty cents on the dollars, wow, okay.
This is exactly the same thing, that's it.
I'm just throwing this out there. Are y'all, are y'all gonna approve the full-time city administrator position?
I have, I personally have no intention of voting for that. I don't know, we all stand.
So you, you've had, we've had it since two thousand and one, but you don't want it anymore?
I, I, you know, we don't wanna get in an argument, Mayor, I don't agree with.
We might as well.
I don't agree with your comparison of that. I do not think we've had one since two thousand and one.
I, I put it out and I showed exactly what was in place.
I don't really need to argue about that here, I, I simply don't, I don't, and you asked me a question, and I personally don't support it.
Anybody else?
I'm asking, ask them.
I'll go. I've said that from what I read.
Well, I know, both of y'all defunded it, but you also said you weren't sure what we were gonna replace it with, and that was why.
Well, it won't be that.
But now you, you defunded it and said, whatever you call it, city superintendent, general superintendent, and all of these.
The general superintendent's role was nowhere close to what a city administrator role was.
They're very close.
I, I was in the, in the, in the government, and I know what that person was used for, and it was not, it was not a city administrator.
They were over departments and helped with administrative. It absolutely has something to do with the budget.
No, it doesn't. It does not have to do with what we're talking about. Well, this could be done at a later time, okay?
Anything can be talked about when it comes to the budget.
We don't agree with it, I'm sorry you don't like our plan.
I'm so glad that this is being live streamed, because y'all are really, really getting the heat on the way you treat me.
I wanna hear, uh, two other Council members, any, any thoughts. The question from the Mayor was about the city administrator.
I'd have to look at the org chart and see how it's changed from when that position was there and what we have now.
They're, they're all, I can, I can get them for you. There's no city that doesn't, either has a ton more employees than we do, and, and we've always had a full-time city administrative role. They haven't always been called city administrator, but they've always been under city depart, over city departments, so, whatever you wanna call it.
What I saw, and what I see now in that position is I see, um, Ms. Walker almost fulfilling the same role that James filled under the Mayor Cant, very similar.
She, she's not an overall, any of the, I'll, I'll pull it up.
And I was also, I think that Sherry, and you know, she was in community development, also kinda had that role that I see that, that Sherry Lee had, even though it was called, you know, Community Development Director, it's kinda like.
She had galeskin in addition to that.
Kinda like the Mayor's right-hand man, I see Jessica fulfilling that, and that's really what that general superintendent role performed back then. Is that, is that accurate?
Absolutely, correct.
I couldn't promise you it wasn't. Ha, ha, this person, I'll tell you the department that he's over.
We just got to agree to disagree on that, that's how I saw it, I see it in both of us.
I'll show you the org charts.
I don't, you know, it doesn't really matter how the org chart look to me, I, I, that's how it was, that's how those functions were performed, uh, just like.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. I mean.
I, I've got it, I've got the job descriptions, I've got the org charts.
Is this done with the Fire Department?
I don't know yet. I, I, I wanna know if the Council has support to help subsidize the purchase of a truck.
I'm good with that, in, in theory, but at the same time, we do have the, the land, and we've got a few other things that I'm sure, when we're looking at, I just wanna see where all this land.
That's why every single time we keep going on these budgets, yeah, 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 I've got all that in my mind going.
I know.
I know some, and it's not just the land that we have. We've gotta make improvements upon, we got the K-one center, it, it, it's not enough to purchase it.
We don't have that much in reserves for the city, but we have way more than we did before this term.
Yeah, I think of one.
One really.
And I, and I keep going through it, and it's hard for me right now to, to start scratching stuff until I see, till I've seen it all.
And that's why the, 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 the one, it's, it's super simplified method, but there's always that stroke of the pen that says, "Well, you got thirty-one million dollars, we have this many needs, you gotta, you gotta, you take it to the departments and say, 'We're gonna cut everything by two percent, you figure out how you're gonna do it, bring it back.'"
I think it's real important to know that that truck that we're asking for, that is, um, that is a first-line engine, protecting Rock Creek.
Right.
And it's nineteen eighty-nine, so.
Right.
That's important to know.
I, I'm hearing Council say they would like to help, and I know you have to take it back.
Right.
They may vote it down, and then the, the numbers, you know, back to seven thousand.
Well, if you have money and you vote it down, then you don't get it, is how I see it.
It's exactly what I said. Three hundred and thirty-one thousand goes down to seven thousand, it's in the budget if they don't approve it.
Right, exactly.
Meaning my budget, it would never be spent.
Right.
What was the seven? I forgot. I guess I can go look.
The Trimble unit, that, we didn't even know what that was, that was IT.
That's an IT.
Yeah, it was an IT.
It'd be three thirty-eight, six ten, I mean.
Are you, do y'all have any more, uh, questions for the Fire Department? I thought everything else was, you know, really important, any changes?
I mean, when we talk about, you know, the, these appropriations, it's, you know, pretty much everything on page twenty, so, you know, we've got the transfers to debt service in there, um, and then a note by that transfers to Capital Projects Fund that we need to figure out, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get to all that. You know, we, we know we got some work, you know? I really keep stall on some of these, you know, big, big, big items that, um, are in everybody, department's budget, knowing that everybody has the needs. It's not easy, just, I think we're done today. Thank you all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor.